Morning, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start out with a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Heather, can we do a roll call?
Weiner. Murtagh.
Here.
Ellison excused. McKenzie. Negro. Laura Negro. Metzinger. Campbell.
Here.
Ray is excused. Kenny.
Here.
Hufal.
There.
Frannick. Frannick. Stark.
Here.
Stendor.
Here.
Berlin.
Here.
Stone. Stone. Usay.
Here.
Micah.
Here.
Btech.
Here.
Huber.
Here.
Shudy.
Here.
Carl.
Here.
Sixteen present.
Okay, we'll go to approval of the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Motion by Kathy Shudy. You have a second.
This is Bill. I'll second it.
Seconded by Bill Metzinger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the May tenth meeting? Oh, public comments. We have any public here who would like to speak? Any public online? Any public online? Here, unanimous, close the public comment period. Need a motion now to approve the minutes of the May tenth meeting?
This is Huber. Also moved to approve the minutes.
Motion by Rich Huber. Seconded by John Weiner. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes.
I just have a question, because I'm kind of a newbie here, but under item three on the second page, under six, section D three, is it, is it just normal when you take a roll call ball, it says roll call approving the resolution, but then that resolution is defeated? I don't know if that's the normal wording, but the resolution was defeated and it says roll call approving.
Did you hear what he said? With all this air conditioning noise up here, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, regular agenda. Item six, section D, third point, it says roll call approving resolution, yes, nine, no, eleven. Just wondering if that's the normal language? Because the motion is defeated. Do you usually say motion approving and then show a vote that defeated it?
Can I speak? Can I speak?
Yes, you go ahead.
Um, the, the motion that you were voting on was to approve. And it was defeated, so, but the motion was to approve.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Dan will go to number five appointments. You want to read that or you made the appointment?
Oh, well, no, at the organizational meeting, Mr. Ray volunteered to take the housing authority since nobody else wanted it, so this is his appointment to the housing authority. And then for the second one, Liz Wabanato's name was given for the Northern Waters Library Board.
We don't have to approve those, right?
Okay.
All right, we need a motion to approve those two appointments. Motion to approve Brad Ray to the Housing Authority.
Also move.
Clarence moved. Matt seconded it.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Appointment of Liz Wabanato to the Northern Waters Library Board. Need motion.
I would like to make a motion to add Liz Wabanato to the Northern Waters Library Board.
Motion by Kathy Shudy.
Second, Frannick.
This is Laura Negro. I'll second.
Seconded by Laura Negro.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to number six on the agenda. Approve ordinance zero zero six, twenty twenty-two, one twenty-one broadband forward community ordinance.
So what this done, the ordinance does is it guarantees that this county will expeditionally, expeditiously process applications, zoning applications, and keep our fees at a minimum for companies that are bringing in broadband into the county. By doing so, it does help the companies that are bringing broadband and move up in points. So they could, they can get grants from the state and the feds. So this is just helping these companies bring broadband here. And we'll be sending this ordinance off to the PSC afterwards, so the PSC knows that we did this.
Okay, I have a question on this one, too. So I'm all in favor of what this is intended to accomplish, but in nowhere in the, in this ordinance or in any cited statutes could I find a definition of broadband, which seemed unusual to me.
Point of order. Shouldn't we have a motion, because I'd make the motion to accept this ordinance as written, so that way we can do discussion? And I'll second Laura's motion.
So I'm sorry, Mr. Posey, could you repeat your question?
Okay, sorry, repeat my question or my point is that in nowhere in the ordinance or the cited statutes could I find a definition of broadband? So I don't really know what the ordinance is speaking to. Usually in an ordinance or definitions.
Just looking to see, this ordinance did come from the Public Service Commission, so. So, uh, I'm, I'm not sure broadband really needs to be defined in the, in the ordinance, I mean. Well, broadband, I mean, here it says in line number ten. Broadband network project means the construction and deployment of wired, wireline or wireless communications facilities to provide broadband communication services to the County Ashland. So, it's line number ten.
All right.
I was going to say, there's lots of different ways we can deliver broadband to our people. They can, they can send up a what are those?
Satellites.
Satellites. They can do, yeah, but
Cellular.
There's cellular, there's things on towers they can do that in, in different spots. They can do wired with a backbone and they can do, what is the little remote control thing? Uh-huh? No, the, the, the ones that have the cameras on them. They have drones. They can use drones to do it. They've got tethered drones that can, you can tether to a place and put up now. So however we need to get broadband to our people, I think is great, and I'm glad it kind of leaves that open.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table to approve. Kathy?
I just want to tell George, too, every meeting that I go to broadband is one of the number one things that the whole states are working on, because if teachers want to teach a class online, they need broadband. And it's holding businesses up from starting up because the internet is so scarce around here and, and you get away from town, you don't have any internet service and it's supposed to be a good quality, so broadband to move into the future is the way to go. That'll be sixty-five dollars.
Pat. Several years ago, Supervisor Negro and I, we served on a committee with Northwest Regional Planning related to broadband access, and I had looked up the definition, too, and I had the same question. It's really the same technology that we use for phone, TV, internet service, all of that. It's the same technology. It's a matter of what's delivered through that. And so that question came up there and it was, as these applications are reviewed, I think the takeaway I had from that Northwest Regional Planning experience was we want to make sure that we are focusing on projects that deliver the high-speed internet that we're thinking about as we sit in this meeting as opposed to something else that's not going to serve the, the purpose. So the review of the applications is key, and I did have a question or concern because it seems that the application is considered complete if there's no response. And yet, it seems like we should have a response and we should know who's going to be responsible for reviewing these to make sure that we are reviewing them. And so companies or firms applying do know their application is complete and they get feedback, so I was wondering if the administrator could respond to that.
I, yeah, these, these applications will come into zoning and zoning would be responsible for time, for the timely turnaround of these. Honestly, these projects are not very controversial. In some cases, we don't have a choice but to issue a permit right away. Cell towers being a great example. The state's already said that municipalities and counties don't have the right to stop a cell phone tower from going up. So, you know, we will, we'll be turning these down, turning these around, I should say, as soon as possible. Also, I'm back to Mr. Posey's question. It took me a while to remember, but the FCC defined what broadband is. And it's a minimum of twenty-five megs up and down. So that's what the federal definition is. And so every, so a broadband project has to have better speeds than that. That's the bare minimum.
I just want to say I'm, I'm all in favor of this. I was just being a nitpicker. This is a in the ordinance, a circular definition. It says, you know, broadband is that which provides broadband, so it's, you know, it's a little bit funny. I'm all in favor, but I think we should probably pass it as is, as long as there is a reference to a real definition as cited by Mr. Brady.
Um, couple of years ago at Superior Days, Mark AA and I did a presentation to the PSC. I'm glad that they're, they turning this around this quick because we told them that the federal definition, which means one of those people with twenty-five megs up and down in a census block is actually considered okay, which leaves tons of people out in our outlying areas. And that's where we'd like to see some of that economic development happening, so I am really happy they turned this around and because we had pitched so many different projects at them, I'm glad they left it open.
Okay, are we ready to vote? We have a motion and a second on the table to approve the broadband community ordinance. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Go ahead. If the chair will let me, I have a point of order. I want to just make sure, Heather, when we did the attendance, we've had two board members join. Okay, so now we're at eighteen and three. Good, so that shows in the record. Thank you.
I just want to see if I was counted as a present, because I don't think that they heard me. Frannick.
Is that Liz?
Yeah.
Yes, we have you recorded as present.
Thank you.
We still have to vote on this. Can I get him to vote on this? All right, we have a motion and a second on the table to approve this. All in favor, say aye. The broadband community ordinance.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Six B, approve resolution RO six, twenty twenty-two, fourteen seventeen. A resolution in support of telecommunications.
This is a sample, this is a companion resolution to the last ordinance. And just encourages court companies and everybody to set up telecommunion options.
Laura.
I'll make the motion that we pass this resolution as written.
Bill. Motion by Laura Negro, seconded by Bill Metzinger. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Six C, approve ordinance zero zero six, twenty twenty-two, one twenty-two. An ordinance established and determine the Ashland County Highway Commissioner. Do we have a motion?
Matt.
I'll move to approve with the amendment of a ten-year period. No, I want to make sure the amendment's there first.
Laura.
I'll second that emotion as amended.
You go ahead.
I can, I may lean on Mr. Murtagh, but.
Could you make sure you use your microphone, please?
Thank you. So Gary, when we hire a sheriff, how many years is this contract for?
A sheriff is elected, the sheriff is an elected office and serves four-year terms.
Okay. Who in the county has a ten-year contract?
Judges are elected to ten-year terms.
Okay. I don't believe it, to give the, the Highway Commissioner a ten-year contract is justified. It should be two or four years, not a lifetime, not six years, not ten years, two to four. And they said, oh, you can, I think last month we, they said we could get rid of them if we had to. We've never gotten rid of anybody before. So it is not as easy as they say it is, so I am not in support of a six or a ten-year contract for anybody.
Last executive meeting, a six-year term was approved. You know.
Yeah, when I received this in the package, we had discussed it in a prior meeting. I thought six years, we'd come to a reasonable compromise. Really, I think ten years is all wrong, and I just could not support that in any way. Thank you.
Bill.
Yesterday, we had a highway department meeting and we talked about this again. And we decided that instead of four versus ten, we went to six. Starting January first, so that's what the Highway Committee did and they voted unanimously to change it to six yesterday, so that's the highway's recommendation.
All right.
Pretty much this is performative because we can, as discussed last time, we can, if there is some kind of performance problem, we can get rid of them tomorrow. I, I don't know why it came up again unless, I don't remember if last time we pushed it off and tabled it, if that was correct, not remembering right now. But just, I guess, just, let's just pick a term, let's pick a term and agree, so we can get this off our, our caseload here.
Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, the rationale for my motion is simply, we hire somebody for the county, I don't care whether it's a highway commissioner or, you know, some administrative assistant, we don't tell them, hey, we're hiring you for ten years unless it's a limited-term appointment. This is really about support of our employees. And what we're saying is we're entrusting him to do the work of the Highway Commissioner and he's going to have our faith and confidence until he loses it. And if that's, you know, next year, we have the ability to sever our ties with them if it's twelve years from now. So this is really a matter of showing support for our employees and the period of time shouldn't be even in there at all, other than statutorily, we're required to set one. And since we're required to set one, let's set it for ten years and move on.
The motion on the table is six years, so.
What?
It was changed to six?
It was amended.
No, just to clarify, when Mr. McKenzie brought it up, he amended it to, with the amendment, the term be changed to ten years. So now we're, you're discussing the resolution with a ten-year term.
Point of order. Don't we have to vote on the amendment before we can vote on the motion?
Aye, you would have to vote on the amendment first, yes.
I'd like to speak in opposition to the amendment. The rationale seems to be that a person can be dismissed at any time. So the time doesn't really matter, so why couldn't we make it just twenty years or thirty years? I think it's a big compliment to the individual for this to be voted, maybe a six-year term, which is more than most appointed positions. So I don't see the rationale for ten years. I really don't. And I would oppose the amendment.
George.
Yeah, I, I just have no clue why this is coming on the board. Back when I got on the board, we were electing a commissioner every year. If you remember, Bert Reamer, he was our commissioner, and that's how we did it. They asked Emmer Shields to become our, he was the city commissioner. And they asked him and he says, I won't do it unless you give me an endless contract. And we did. So I, I have no clue what is less of a person with Mr. Erickson than, than Emmer Shields was, other than we heard Emmer's support him. And we heard that he doesn't have an engineering degree. He didn't need one. Aries does all of our engineering. Emmer's didn't really do our engineering. He always had Emmer. I was on there eight years and we always had Aries or a different engineering company do our engineering. So I'm sure that's what we're going to continue to do if we have any engineering to do, so I still don't know why we're putting contract out there on this guy.
Okay, Dan. According to this ordinance, we are recommending a secure term. I don't know what you're talking about. Ken was last off the table.
Well, state statutes require that you appoint a highway commissioner to be eligible for state transportation funds. The minimum term is two years, which coincides with the county board term. The statutes also give the counties ability to establish a longer term if they like. If they don't establish a longer term, it's by default two years. So what all this is doing is establishing what the term of office for highway commissioner will be. And I have to say, all, all arguments are right. I mean, yes, if Mr. Erickson's not performing his job well enough, he can be terminated. If Mr. Erickson decides to leave his job, he can leave at any point. It's all with what this county board feels comfortable with.
I agree with George that this should not be a ten-year contract. And you all are sitting here and saying today, well, if we don't like him for one reason or another, we can get rid of him. That's not that easy, you guys. In nineteen ninety-two, when George and I were on the board, there was a person that we had issues with. Try to get rid of that person was a very hard thing to do. It is not easy to do. I would like to see a four-year contract form or whatever you want to call it, but not six and not ten.
Pat.
I just read the state statutes. Normally it's a two-year term, but the board can give a, a longer term if it chooses. It would seem to me the first step would be the county determine what criteria it would use for extending it beyond two years. On the one hand, it, it doesn't really seem to matter if we can truly let a person go regardless of the length of their term. But what concerns me is, if you remember when we got ARPA money with our previous administrator, the employees had an opportunity to submit a document explaining why they thought they should get additional pay for having worked during COVID. And on finance, we got, I believe, a fifteen-page document from employees, each of them explaining why they thought they deserved additional pay. Every one of those requests had merit. I would have liked to have supported every one of those, but our finances don't allow that. We did in the end support two requests. One for a position that's entirely reimbursed for, by the state for that additional money, and we made sure that every cent was reimbursed before we said yes to that. And the other position was one where we pay someone an additional five thousand because that was going to be less money than if we didn't do that, we were going to have to have a full-time person added. So we did not support any of those requests for all of these other people except for two where it didn't cost us a cent. When I think about this, I think about, we're working on a comp study. Every one of the employees deserve the same opportunity to have guidelines for any type of pay increase, any kind of reward benefit, longer-term appointment, et cetera, and we don't have that yet. My concern is for the morale of the other employees who say, why did someone get something and I didn't? Where's my opportunity to get something if someone else gets it? And when we got that fifteen-page document, at that time, the Highway Committee, four out of five served on exec, currently thirty out of five on highway serve on exec. One of the employees came to me and said, look, some employees, because they're department heads or are more visible to the board, they get more opportunities to get what they want than those of us who work in places who you don't know who we are and you don't know what we do, et cetera. And so it really struck me how employees pay attention to what we do and how they perceive whether everyone has that same opportunity and whether what we do is in writing or not. I don't really care if the term is two years or ten years. I truly believe that part doesn't matter. But I do think we have an obligation to all employees to put a document in writing, which is our handbook, that outlines the criteria and opportunity for every employee to be recognized, earn higher pay, longer terms, or whatever is appropriate for what they do. That's what concerns me. We said no to lots of employees in that fifteen-page document. And this feels like we're not being consistent on how we treat our employees, and that's the concern that I have.
George.
This, this strikes me that the, the time set here sets up an automatic review point forced upon the board. For all other reviews, we're not really forced to look at the individual, so what's a reasonable timeframe for us to come back and say whether or not we want to reappoint this person? So to me, ten years is too long. I think the Highway Committee came up with a reasonable compromise here, and I would fully support this, this compromise ordinance as written at six years, even though four years is some advantages.
Bill. This is Bill. I supported the ten-year appointment before and years ago, being the Highway Commissioner was really political. And the Highway Commissioner had to watch out whose toes he's stepping on because in two years, there was an election and they held it over his head. And if he ticked somebody off, they were completely out to get rid of him, and in two years, he would have been done. And so every year, he came up for a vote every two years. And to me, that was, that was not right. So I supported the ten years and it did not pass the county board. So the Highway Committee talked it over. Matt Erickson is very competent. To me, he's doing an excellent job. He explains things at the meeting very well, and as far as I know, he's looking, he's constantly looking for grants and, and how he can save the county money. So I have no problem with Matt for ten years. So I have no problem with Matt for 10 years, but it was a compromise for six years. And the thing is, that gives him some stability, that he doesn't have to worry about uh, ticking somebody off and, and saying, well, okay, they're going to try to get rid of me next county board meeting, because the county board is kind of political, whether you, you know, like to admit it or not. Uh, so, you know, I would support six, I would support 10. I, I have no problem with that, and Matt's doing an excellent job. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to just point out that this is actually financial neutral. It's, you know, the, if anything, I think you could argue that it would save us money, and that we're not having to renegotiate, uh, you, you know, some sort of financial arrangements every couple of years because of the, the terms changing. Um, as far as a review of his work, I believe we have monthly, or, or at least every other month, highway committee meetings to review his work. So I, I think that's all in place. And what we're really talking about is support of the employees that have said before. Uh, and, and 10 years is, is, actually, there shouldn't be any, in my opinion. He should just serve at our pleasure until such time that we decide to part company, be it him or us. But since we have to pick a term in order to apply for state aids, let's go with 10 years and be done with this.
Yes.
This, this is Mike, and the highway committee came up with the six years. And if we've got committees recommending to us, I think we should respect their recommendation. And I would support the six years.
Yeah, I think the reason it's backed before us is because it originally came to us as a 10-year term, and, and there was a lot of opposition to that. So it went back to executive and highway, and both committees agreed on a six-year term. And so like Mike said, you know, since they're, they're recommending it, maybe that's what we should go with. The other point I'd like to make is, the only reason this is coming up is because by statute, we have to appoint a highway commissioner now every two years, or we can make that a longer term. If you look at any of the other department heads, they're not on a term because they're hired until they choose to leave or we fire them. I mean, we don't hire a director of health and human services and say, well, you're going to serve for a two-year term, and then we're going to reappoint you. We hire the director of that department, and they serve until they either resign or we fire them. This is the only department head that we have to re, right now, we have to reappoint every two years, because that's what the statute says. So we're just kind of trying to extend that term.
Yes, Kev.
I, I kind of think what Clarence is saying is, all right, a two-year term is not enough for a job like that. In the olden days, you didn't have to have a degree in anything. You got elected to the highway commissioner's office. But you can't do that anymore, people. It's too educated. It's too technical. And you need a college degree to sign the state forms. He does not have that. Maybe eventually he'll get it. When he gets a four-year engineering degree, six years. But right now, it's too much.
George.
My position on this has nothing at all to do with any individual's performance, current or past, is strictly structural about how I think it works for the county and for the board, regardless of the individual. And to me, a little bit extended term is, is a confidence builder, and a, a pat on the back every six years, because we think you're doing a great job. This is probably just great. Don't want to wait for 10.
I.
If I may, call for the question. Let's get this voted on. All right, before we vote on this now, we are voting. I know he has.
So you need a second.
All right, do we have a second?
Second from George Bussell.
I'll second.
Seconded by Laura Nagro. Now, are we voting on six or not?
Calling the question is merely voting to end debate. So that's all you're doing, you're voting to end debate. The question was called, it was seconded, so that's, that is a privileged motion, which means you have to go straight to voting, uh, whether or not you want to cut off debate. And after that, then you vote on the amendment. And after that, then you vote on the underlying ordinance.
Okay. Last sentence in the ordinance is, the county board supervises, does ordain that the term of asking.
We have to vote on calling the question.
We already did. All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, wants to stay longer on this subject? I think we beat it to death.
Point of order. Uh, the amendment was in the motion. When we motioned to pass it, so. We just amended the term on it.
Right, but that's still an amendment to the underlying ordinance, so that still needs to be voted on. If you do, if you vote, if you're doing what you're, all right, then if it fails, it's dead. The whole thing, there's no more votes.
Dan.
So.
Dan, could you explain what the vote will be, please?
This is screwed up.
Microphone, please.
The way it was brought up, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McKenzie, you made the motion. Is you, you brought the motion, the ordinance up for discussion, and amended it just for the term to be 10 years.
Yeah, I made a motion to, for the resolution to be approved with an amended term of 10 years.
Right.
Point of order. Uh, the motion as presented by Mr. McKenzie is not on the agenda. It's not pre-published on the agenda, therefore, the amendment must be voted on.
Um, I, actually, his, his motion's okay, because the, the underlying ordinance is on the agenda, and you can amend anything that's on the agenda. So, if, uh, so, yeah, you're voting now on the ordinance with, as amended, with the attend, amendment for 10 years, is what you're voting on. So if you approve this, the term will be 10 years.
Mike. Mike Berlin, poll vote, please. Pardon me, a poll vote. Roll call. All right, we're going through the motions again here. We already voted a 10-year term down. If you are going to consider a 10-year term, there's an amendment on the table to approve a 10-year term. Those in favor of that, say yes.
They want a roll call. They want a roll call.
Whatever. I'm just explaining what the hell we're doing here. It's just getting a little confusing. We, we should have left it as proposed, but we didn't. Okay, roll call vote would be, yes, would be for a 10-year term, no would be no.
Murdick.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Nagro.
Yes.
Metzinger.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Kinney.
No.
Pufal.
No.
Frannick.
No.
Stark.
No.
Stendor. Ron Stendor. Berlin.
No.
Stone is absent. Gusey.
No.
Mika.
No.
Btech.
No.
Huber.
Yes.
Shudy.
No.
Carl.
No.
Weiner. Six, yes. Eleven, no. Fail.
Okay, now we need a motion to put the six-year term on the table. Laura.
I'll make the motion to pass this ordinance the way it's written.
Mike.
George Bussell, seconds.
Yes, John.
Everybody is either going for the 10-year or the two-year. I think that we could probably make a halfway point with six years, make everybody happy.
Any more comments?
Yeah.
In this resolution, the title is an ordinance establishing the term of the Ashland County Highway Commissioner. We're really dealing with two things at once here. One is, what term do we want for the highway commissioner? And the second part is, appointing a, a particular individual to the highway commissioner. And it seems that we should do those two things separately. So if the goal is to establish a six-year term for the highway commissioner, to me, it would seem that this resolution should speak entirely to that and to nothing else, in particular, not to who we're appointing. So the last whereas there, where it mentions a particular person, if what we're truly doing is establishing the term of the highway commissioner, to me, that last whereas should be removed, so that we simply consider, do we want a six-year term for our highway commissioner, irrespective of who that person is? And then, in a separate agenda item, then consider who we want to approve to the highway commissioner position. Because if we pass this, um, you know, what we're really doing is creating a six-year term for the highway commissioner. And the last whereas isn't relevant to the task of making it a six-year term. So I guess I'd like the administrator to respond to that.
Matt to six-year term, it just says, whereas we had appointed him to a two-year term in January 2022. So it's not saying who we're appointing for a six-year term, in my opinion.
Is there any reason we couldn't take out the last whereas?
No, you can certainly take it out.
So I'd like to offer an amendment that we remove the last whereas, and then in the future, the, the board appoint the highway commissioner.
Is that a friendly amendment? Because I, I will, I will redo my motion so that it reflects that. Because I agree, there's two processes in here.
Yes, that is a friendly amendment.
I don't remember who seconded. I, I'm, George, I'm redoing my, my original motion as, as written, to take off that last one.
I'll second that.
All right, now where the hell are we? Pardon? That's not what I mean.
Where we are is, it's, the resolution's been amended again. So if there's no more comments, then you'll vote on the amendment. And then, another vote as amended. For final passage.
Oh, okay. Bill.
Um, I, I, I guess I want to be clear on one thing. We're not establishing the county highway commissioner's term to be six years. We're just giving this to Matt Erickson for six years. Well, then, then I guess I'm opposed to that, because I think we have to weigh every individual accordingly. And I think Matt deserves six years. But you can't go ahead and hire somebody else and just say, we're hiring you for six years. Yeah, so I, I think Matt has earned that. And that, you know, from, from his performance so far, he's been there like about maybe three years, maybe? Two and a half? So, you know, that's, I feel comfortable in giving him a six-year. I felt comfortable in giving him a 10-year. But I'm not going to go ahead and, if we get a new highway commissioner, say, you're automatically there for six years, when he hasn't worked a day. Well, unless, unless, unless we change it at that time.
Well, that's why, as we were going through this, Pat was right. Because that last statement on there says, the Ashland County Board of Supervisor does ordain that the term of the Ashland County Highway Commissioner, Commissioners shall be for six years, commencing on January 1st, 2023. That says that, it doesn't say Matt is confirmed for six years. It says, we're changing the term in there. So there's two different pieces in there. That's why my amended motion takes that last now there for off of there, and just talks about Matt.
And if you look at that, that, this will take effect on January 1st of next year. So at that time, is when we would appoint Matt to that six-year term. And I agree, that shouldn't even be in the ordinance. Because, because the six-year term will not take effect until January 1st of next year.
Yeah. Okay, no. Actually, my, mine took out the last whereas, which was Matt, to make that six-year term. So if we're making the six-year term, let's make the six-year term. If we're not, vote it down, and then we can talk about Matt being in there.
That's exactly what I wanted.
So I want to respond to supervisor mentor. You just said, look, if we get a new one, we don't want to do a six-year term. Um, and yet, your comments a few minutes ago said, because being highway commissioner can be a bit political, we want to give the person a job, some job security, so they're not at the whims of the board. So, you know, those, those two statements, at least in my mind, are at odds with each other. So if we do this for a six-year term, and we have our current highway commissioner, and things are working out, then fine, it's a six-year term each time, as long as this person's here. But, you know, at some point, the person leaves. The board, then, when they get a new highway commissioner, if they want to, they could change the term back to the two years that the state statute has, and then stick with two years until such time the board would decide a longer term, if that's appropriate. Would that alleviate those concerns?
Yeah, I think I could live with that.
Are we done beating this to death? Well. In reading this thing through, I think we have to vote on the original ordinance that was drawn up. Yeah.
My motion was that that last whereas with Matt was taken out of there. So as clarification, otherwise, right now, we're voting on the six-year term, because the now therefore is left in there. The, the county board supervisor ordains the term as six years. So first six years, and then Matt, or, or one, but you can't do both in the one. This is just not a good written ordinance. Too much stuff all in one.
Point, point of, point of order, there's an amendment on the floor that's been seconded and been discussed, and it is Laura's amendment to remove that last whereas from the ordinance. Since amendment, we need to vote on, right?
Yes, you'd be voting on the amendment next.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Yes, Matt.
I'd like to call the question, please.
Do we have a second?
I would second that.
Seconded by Bill Metzinger. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we're voting on removing the last whereas on the ordinance.
And it's the one I have highlighted on the screen.
Are we ready to vote? Put this beast to death. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say no. Who was that? Okay, now are we ready to vote on the ordinance?
Could we have a roll call vote, please?
You sure can. Voting on the term of the Ashland County Highway Commissioner to value it be a six-year term commencing January 1st, 2023. At that point in time, I would assume we probably still have to reappoint him. Right?
Yes, he would be reappointed, have to be reappointed later in the year.
Okay, can we have a roll call on this?
Yes.
Nagro.
Yes.
Metzinger.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Kinney.
Yes.
Pufal.
Yes.
Frannick.
Franek.
Yeah.
Stark.
Yes.
Stendor.
Yes.
Berlin.
Yes.
Busse.
Yes.
Mika. Vtech.
Yes.
Huber.
Yes.
Shutey. Carl.
Yes.
Weiner. Murdig.
Yes.
Fifteen yes, three no.
No, that wasn't so bad, was it? Okay, now we'll move on to six D. What? Yeah. We'd probably argue about that. Prove the request of the Sheriff's Department to allow the nine-one-one. Why didn't you tell me? Okay, forget that last statement. Six E, approve the twenty twenty-one forestry annual report.
Chris Hoffman's on the line to explain the annual report.
Good morning, everybody. The annual report is something we do. It's just kind of a quick synopsis of what we accomplished last year. The first couple pages are just a breakdown of our timber sales from last year, both the spring and the fall opening. And then the total volume of the wood that we produced. The soup and bolts are really on page six. Where we discuss our revenue and where pieces of that revenue went. We pay back a port, we pay back our variable acreage share loan out of our timber revenue and then a portion of that monies goes to the towns in which we have county forest property. Ten percent of our timber sale revenue goes to the towns based on the percentage of county forest land that's in their township. So you see at the bottom of the page, the apportionment to the towns was just short of fifty-four thousand dollars, and you can see how it breaks out to each respective township. And then we do have an added town that we give a half of one percent of timber sale revenue to the town of Gordon. They maintain a couple roads that are very significant to our access to the county forest and getting forest products out to the state highway. So in deference to that maintenance that they we do, they do for us, we give them one half of one percent of that revenue. And that was twenty-six hundred dollars. That leaves a net timber sale revenue of just over four hundred and sixty thousand dollars last year that came off the county forest. And then the remaining pages of the report are just kind of a list and a breakdown of the work that we did last year. We, they don't change a whole lot. What we do, we try to capture any of the big projects or out of the ordinary projects that we do. And so I guess that's it, unless anybody has any questions. I'm obviously open to answer questions, but that's our annual report for twenty twenty-one.
I'll make the motion that we approve this forestry report.
We have a second, yes, Mike. Seconded by Mike Berlin. Have a motion by Laura Negro. Second, yes.
I just want to say, Chris, this is a great report. I love seeing the quick and dirty of a department all written down like this. The only other thing I'd like to see on it next time is some goals for this next year, but otherwise it's beautiful.
Towards the end of the year, we'll, we'll have our annual work planned for next year, which will have all of our goals and plans laid out for next year's operation.
Excellent.
Bill. This is Bill. I have a question for Chris. Even though land in this, in a certain town is not logged, so they have no logging, they still get a percentage of the countywide forest. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it doesn't pertain to where the logging occurred. It pertains to the acreage of county land that's within that township.
Thank you.
Bill. I gotta, this is Louis. I got a question. We need to look at it in the future about getting the towns a little more partisan of revenue. Because the, we're losing parcy sales and Chris can confirm this, I think, because the roads are so bad in certain townships. We don't get enough money down there to fix the roads up decent so we can have better sales.
Mike.
This is Mike Stark. It's almost like a point of order. Instead of approving the report, I think we accept the report. I mean, how can we approve what they've done without knowing all the detail? We accept their report. This is the question.
I mean, it, it does say on the agenda to approve the report, so I just went with that. So my thought is potato, potato on that one.
Are we ready to vote? We're voting to approve the twenty twenty-one forestry annual report. Any more questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
As opposed, say no. Most carries, thank you. We go to six F, approve resolution R O six, twenty twenty-two, fourteen eighteen. Resolution to assign a signatory authority for carbon credit project.
This one's from forestry too. Part of the carbon credit project that we're putting together with Blue Source. Blue Source and the Carbon Registry require some form of documentation assigning the signatory authority to sign documents generated as part of that carbon credit project. This resolution seeks to place that signatory authority within the county forest administrators role. Obviously, after consult, consultation with the Forestry and Recreation Committee and or the county administrator. But that way, it's just one place that we have to go to get documents signed in the future and don't have to chase people around and chase down signatures.
Kathy.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this.
Marty. Motion made by Kathy Shutey, seconded by Marty Vtech to approve. Laura.
Do we have to have in there about the review from the committee and the administrator? Because I'm more comfortable making sure that the administrator is in on that.
Yeah, I think we should, well, I think the intent here is that, yeah, Chris would have to check, check with me before signing.
But it doesn't say that in there?
Well, it says, uh, well, signing after consultation with the Forest and Recreation Committee and or the County Administrator.
All right.
So that gives Forest Committee the ability to approve it also.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the table to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. We go to six G, approve ordinance zero zero six twenty twenty-two dash one twenty-three. Floodplain ordinance, February two thousand eight, amended June of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, some of you probably recognize this before because the county board passed it last year. It's coming back to us because the D N R had problems with how it was noticed. So we have to redo the whole thing. It's been noticed properly up until the meeting. We have the newspaper clippings to prove it and the affidavits in the newspaper to prove it was published properly. And so now we have to re-pass it and then we will be putting the resol, the ordinance in the newspaper also as the D N R wishes. So this is really just a process issue we have to go through again.
So I guess that explains why it's coming back because, yes, it looks familiar. Was there anything else on the agenda where this was approved a year ago that wasn't noticed properly that we may need to consider coming back and redoing in the same way?
Nothing to my knowledge has been, else has to come back. But this one, the D N R took particular issue with the they just didn't like how it was noticed.
Dan, Laura had her hand up first. The dam, we're having issues in the southern part of the county that we haven't claimed because we haven't claimed that right, correct? I, is that listed in here?
That's, that's the Hudson Bay Dam. That's a different game.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure that they weren't having us reapprove this so we were claiming anything.
No.
Mike.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution R zero six dash two zero two two dash fourteen nineteen and that dash one twenty-three floodplain ordinance.
We have a second. Wait. Motion made by Mike Stark, seconded by Louis Carroll. All in favor, say aye.
Discussion, please.
Discussion. Aye.
George.
Aye.
I just wanted to ask the meaning of the highlighting. Of the highlighting in the document. Why highlight it?
Changes were made.
That's what was changed in the original ordinance.
These are the only things that were changed.
Yeah, and that was the original ordinance back in twenty-one. That was, that's what was changed. We're just redoing this because the D N R did not like the public notice of it.
And I have a question too, Dan.
Yeah.
Um, you might have just answered it, but what was wrong with the way we noticed it?
I think, I think they didn't like that, um, how it's a type two notice, I believe. So it's a type two notice. I don't think they liked how many days elapsed between the second notice in the paper and the county board voting on it. I think they wanted more time in between there.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any more comments? Are we ready to vote?
We voted.
Motion to approve floodplain ordinance amended June of twenty twenty-one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oh, most carries, thank you. We've got a six H, approve resolution R O six dash twenty twenty-two dash one four one nine. Resolution to amend, resolution.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Chair. This one looks familiar also. We tweaked it just a little bit because one of the financial institutions had problems with the language, so we just changed it to keep the financial institutions happy.
Yes, Laura.
I'll make a motion to approve this as written.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Laura Negro, seconded by Kathy Shutey. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. We've got a six, aye. Approved resolution R O six, twenty twenty-two, fourteen twenty. A resolution, resolution to add a community member to the ag and extension committee.
This was an, a request that came out of the Ag and Extension Committee at their last meeting in April. Mr. Kenny was there and made the motion, so I defer to him.
So I've been on the Ag and Extension Committee, and I'm also on this term, the Land and Water Conservation Committee. And so one question or comment I have is under state statute, two members of the board have to be on both the Ag and Extension and the Land Conservation Committee. And we have a citizen on the Land Conservation Committee already, and we would like to add a member to the Ag and Extension Committee. And I guess one question is, in my mind is, would we have the same person serve on both if they're interested? And by state statute, two out of five board members do, so there's an argument for that because you see the overlapping issues. Or would we want to consider a different person? And then how will that decision be made on whether it's the same person or two different people? I'm not clear on how that would work given this, but it would be nice to add a community member.
As it stands right now, I believe Mr. Mika and Mr. Busse serve on both committees. So that would, that takes care of the statutory obligation for Ag and Extension to be on land conservation. So this is really just to add a community member to Ag and Extension.
But the community member. Yeah. Would we have the same person on both? Because we have a community member on land conservation, and if we add one to Ag and Extension, is it going to be the same person if they're interested? Or are we going to have two different people? There is an argument obviously be made for both being the same because state statute requires some overlap. So I don't, it's not clear to me on how that decision is going to be made.
Well, that's an appointment just like any other appointment. So that appointment will be made and brought to the board for approval.
He's going to recommend.
That's an appointment by the chair, I believe.
Two comments. I know when I first got on this board, the Ag and Extension Committee and the Land Conservation Committee had the same members on both, and they were elected at a reorganizational meeting. Now that changed here a few years ago. But I would also are those committees determined, is there something in state statutes or, or you know, I, I think, as I remember, land conservation might require some community members on that committee. And I don't know if, if it allows a community member to be on the Ag and Extension. I'm not opposed to it, but I, I'm just wondering if it allows a community member to be on that committee.
Yeah, we, we can, as a county board, we can add a community member to the committee. But we are required to have two Ag and Extension on land conservation. And in this case, the two, the two people I believe are Mr. Busse and Mr. Mika.
Bill. This is Bill. Is this member that if this community member, are they going to be a paid member then? Or are they just volunteering to do it? What, what is the status on that? What, what's happening on land conservation? Does anyone know? The community member, are they getting paid?
There are two members on the land conservation that are paid a per diem and mileage. Carol Peck and Jerry Richardson. Well, there isn't, Ken Lindquist is also named on that committee, but he hasn't had any meetings or anything, so. So there are three that I carry as committee members, but is he new to it?
If money's a concern, you can make an amendment to say under the third be resolved. Or, no, under the first one, that the city, sorry, point. You can say he's unpaid if money's a concern.
Bill.
I don't have a problem whether they pay him or not. I don't care. But I just think that we need to be specific and actually pinpoint it down and say, okay, they're going to be paid or they're not going to be paid. You know, and if, if they're paid, I, I don't have a problem with that at all. I just like to know.
Matt.
Yeah, I agree with, with Mr. Metzinger. I think it's just matter of nailing it down. I, I don't have a problem with it. And I think it's appropriate that they be paid. I'd like to point out too, it's my understanding that the University of Wisconsin is looking at trying to cut the extension program. So it would be good to have another member on that committee to help argue against that. For most all of us, the U W extension is our only contact with the University of Wisconsin. And they have over the years provided, you know, great support to the community on many items from leadership down to what type of bug is that I'm looking at? And, you know, that's something that should be important to all of us and to the state, and we need to do what we can as a board to support our extension program and, and keep it active and not allow the university to slash it so that it can be used and that's money down in Madison. Thank you.
Matt. For clarification, we have community members. For clarification, we have community members on a committee. I take it that they're voting members, can they also serve as chair and vice chair?
No, chair and vice chair should be a county board member.
But they are voting members otherwise.
Yeah, but yeah, chair and vice chair has to be a county board member.
Yeah.
All right, are we ready to vote on this? Joe, Kathy?
So, in nineteen ninety-two, when I was on the board, there were no, um, committee members on the ag and extension committee. And I've been on ag and extension for, starting my sixth term. There's never been a community, community member because of money. They didn't want to pay for another committee member. And so now, all of a sudden, we're going to find money to pay for another committee member. And I've been here many times asking to be paid to go to the county fair board meeting for the ag and extension committee, which I give a report every single meeting for the fair. And there wasn't money, and there wasn't this, but now we're going to put money in the budget to put a community member. And I think it stinks. The county gives the fair twenty thousand dollars a year. And you should have somebody on the county board who goes to that meeting to say to the people, here's how they're spending the money, that now we come and give a report every time at the end of the year, we give you a, a financial report for the county fair. And that's only because.
That's not on the agenda. I understand what you're saying, and I, uh, I agree with you, but it isn't on the agenda.
But now we're going to pay someone to be a community member, that is on the agenda. Thank you.
Um, I would just like to see us designated in the ordinance that, that they're paid or not paid, whichever way it goes. Oh, Lord. Okay. Um, I would like to make a motion to pass this resolution. With the amendment that now therefore be it resolved, the citizen member shall be paid a per diem the same as citizen members on the land and conservation committee.
Right, so the point is, well, the citizen member on ag and extension, we paid the same as the citizen members on land conservation.
I would like to second that motion.
Is that an amendment? As stated with the amendment, yes.
Just the amendment, just the amendment. Okay, okay.
George, you wanted to pour?
George, what's the second?
Oh, you seconded.
Are we, are we talking about the amendment or the, the resolution as amended?
Aye, you would, you'd be voting on the amendment first.
Okay, so I'll second the amendment.
All right, we're voting on the amendment to the resolution that the county board representative to ag and extension be paid, right?
No, the citizen member. The citizen member.
Citizen member, well, okay. Technicalities. Do you understand what we're voting on? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed?
No.
Louis opposed.
Who's opposed, Kathy?
Oh, Kathy. Sorry, she's a ventriloquist. Thought it was you. Okay, now we'll vote on the resolution itself.
As amended.
Pat?
In response to Kathy Schutte's comments about the fair, I would encourage you to make a recommendation to the chair who this community member is, and perhaps that person. Well, we're.
Point of order, this, we're in the middle of doing our res.
I know, but it includes appointing a community member, and it would seem that the topic of.
Point of order, we're supposed to be addressing the chair too.
My suggestion, my suggestion is the chair consider, um, those who serve to support the county fair. And if there's someone in that capacity that would be, um, a, a good candidate to serve on ag and extension, we could get some overlap with those on the county fair and this community member on the ag and extension committee.
Yes. The ag and extension?
Yeah, we need a motion to adopt as amended.
Mike?
This is Mike, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, resolution as amended.
Do we have a second?
It was already amended.
The resolution as amended is on the floor for a vote. So I would, if there's no further discussion, call the vote.
We don't have a, we don't have a second to adopt as amended, or just to amend it.
Please use your microphones.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
George, are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
What is the amendment?
The amendment was to pay.
We already did that.
I know, so we're done.
We already did that.
No, so now you're voting on the resolution as amended.
We already approved that we're paying them, right?
You, you voted on the amendment, and now you have to vote on the resolution as amended.
I understand that, but then don't throw the last one back at me. Okay, now we're voting on the, approve the resolution as amended. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
No.
Motion she carries, thank you. Administrator updates.
We have officially started budget season here. Department heads will have until July first to get their capital budgets in. And they've already passed their deadline to get their capital budgets into Rachel and Taylor for any IT needs. The purpose is that, so they could research the items to see if we need them. Um, general budgets are due July fifteenth. Um, I'm happy to say highway is already turned in, both of theirs. And highway committee did look them over and refer them to finance for a go-over. The intent is it goes back to highway after finance has a chance to look at it. Obviously, then, at the end, later on, finance will decide whether or not they like it. So, um, we, we anticipate finance committee meetings in August, start going over all of these. How many we do in any given meeting will be up to the committee. I, I recommend, I would recommend that departments like HHS is just one meeting, because it's such a big department. See what else we got. Uh, I was asked to, uh, keep a, a, give a report on staffing changes. So. As you can see, since June twen, this is as of today, and since the last board meeting. So, we had Joan Weber retire. And it, and Erin Tibbetts resigned in child support. But Joan was replaced by Courtney Nemec, who's an in-house appointment. And Aljana Burns is new. Many of you know Laura Compton left the ADRC to work for the state, where she's managing a big group of ADRCs now. Uh, she was replaced in-house by Natasha McFadden. And Natasha's job was replaced by Sophie Thompson, who's a new college graduate. Um, I believe at NYD is going to be taking over the criminal justice coordinator position, vacated by Abby Johnson. We're working with Judge McKnight to set up a meeting, and we still have to finalize pay. In land description, Jillian Koleski left, uh, for personal reasons. She left as soon as school ended, and she's been replaced by Karen Miller. Our receptionist down at the forestry department recently left, has been replaced by Shanna Curry. Shanna's brand-new, and she's been doing a great job learning everything. Uh, I'm sure the forestry committee can tell you some more about her. Both, uh, Matt Schultz resigned a while ago. And Jerome, uh, Jerome Wadachak resigned too. He moved to Villas County, which is closer to his home and where his wife works. So Tom Ernst, who used to be, worked for our forester department before going to Price County to work as a forester, replaced Matt Schultz. He is now the deputy administrator. And Soria Peterson, who's a brand-new college grad, replaced Jerome as the forester. An extension, Doug Lippert retired last week, last Friday. His official last day is in July, but he has vacation to burn off. So Doug is no longer with us, we were wishing the best. Um, and Highway James Sturgill left for private sector. Matt will be a higher replacement sometime this summer to fall, so we can get somebody trained to do snow plowing. And we had five seasonal employees this summer. Uh, I believe one of them has recently left though, so they have to hire another one. Uh, and the clerk of courts, uh, Robian, took the job, a job at the state, he's now the court reporter. So he's still with us. And Carrie Schultz resigned for another job, and then they were replaced by Morgan Schmidt and themselves. I'm sorry, I can't spell her last, spra, s- start. Um, and this, actually, the board was, dealt with this issue earlier. Mike Monborg retired on marked, March twenty-seventh. And, um, Mike Anderson resigned May sixth. Oh, and there's just a couple more here, I'm sorry. Um, our, as you can see, Dave McGuire took over as a patrol deputy, he was our nine-one-one communications director. Hannah Walsh was named as a new nine-one-in director. Lisa Marsh left her secretary position up in the DA's office. And she's been replaced by Alvia Heller, who moved in from dispatch. Her long-term goal is to work in the criminal justice system on the DA side or judge's side. And in land conservation, we hired two seasonal employees, like normal, to work in aquatic invasions.
I think this is a very good report, but I really like a printout on this with us, uh, because this is a lot to fathom.
Sure.
But I think this is, this is the first time that we've actually know who's leaving and coming. You know, when you walk into an office, you don't even know who the people are. So I appreciate that, and I just would like a printout, a written.
Sure, I, I could, I'll put a printout, and then we can stick it in the committee box online.
Thank you.
Are we doing regular exit interviews with everybody that leaves?
Uh, we're trying to do them, uh, not everybody is willing to do them. Yep, and then, yeah, that's all I got for now. Anybody who wants a printed copy, please let me know, and we'll get you one right away. You can take home with you today. Two, three, four, five. All right, we'll, I'll print it before everybody leaves, and guys can grab what you want.
I attended the COWS workshop, the county officials workshop in, in Cable on May eighteenth. And all of the new board members that came on, you should go to this meeting. This is a good meeting for you to learn rules, procedures, and stuff like that. It was in Cable, it's every year, so next year when it comes up, you guys really should go, because it's a really good meeting to go to. For this year, I took a handbook with me home, an extra one for the county board. And I just got in at two o'clock this morning from Florida, so I forgot it at home. So I'll bring it to Dan, and you'll see a copy of the, of the workbook that we used that day. Thank you.
Uh, and just to piggyback on what she was saying, those workshops are available online also. If you go to the Wisconsin Counties Association website, you can get the twenty-twenty meetings that they did via Zoom online there. So, and all the written materials there too. So that's the Counties Association website. Uh, if anybody has trouble finding it, let me know, I can get you an exact link. Oh, and I did have one more thing to make, I'm sorry. Before, speaking of this, the executive committee approved for three additional county board supervisors to go to the convention in La Crosse. So if we could get the, but those three volunteers as soon as possible. Okay, Laura?
I'd like to go.
Kathy?
Louis wants to go too.
And there, there we go, so we got our three. I'd also like to note, just on the side, that, um, the, the Kalahari is filled up completely, so we can't get rooms there. Um, so there's a hotel right down the street.
That's good.
That we'll be staying at, they have a shuttle bus service. If rooms open up at the Kalahari, then we will grab them and give them out as soon as possible. And I'm sorry, Mr. Stark.
Dan, did you say in La Crosse, it's in Wisconsin Dells?
It's in the Wisconsin Dells.
Oh, not La Crosse.
Yeah, Mike is still waiting patiently.
Oh, okay. Uh, just a, uh, we're getting into budget season, and I think everybody's aware of the issue that, uh, the town of Le Point had on the budget with the police, uh, for this year and going into next year. And I wanted to let you know that on the twenty-ninth of June, which is a week from Wednesday, there's a meeting, a, a special town board meeting in Le Point, where all the people from the town are invited to talk about police service on the island. I'd like to just invite anybody on the county board that would like to show up, to come in and, and hear the, uh, the issues, because it's an issue that's going to be in front of the finance committee and.
Is that going to be available on Zoom?
Yeah, it, it will be, it won't be a Zoom meeting, but what they do is they broadcast it, so you can, what they do is they broadcast the meeting, so you can, you can see it and listen, but you can't interact. But it's at five o'clock on, uh, Wednesday, the twenty-ninth. And there's a decent ferry schedule, and you can walk on the boat and come over if you, if you want to, just to see what, uh, what's going on the town.
Um, I'll ask the town administrator to get me a link to that, and I'll put it, I'll email it to the county board.
Uh, don't forget to turn in your vouchers. Now we need one more motion.
Um, I have something to say before we close, this is Franek, may I?
Go ahead, Liz.
Um, with everybody in the community, um, hearing about more drug overdose, uh, deaths and, um, overdoses themselves, I would just like to know, as a county, what can we, we do to, um, be a part of the solution? You know, as far as, um, possible sober living in our community? I've been in contact with, uh, Curtis Goffier, um, that works at Birch House. It's a men's sober living. He is overextended, he's volunteering his time. And I don't know how we can, maybe we can use ARPA funds, I'm not sure. You know, um, what we can do to try to, um, get another sober living, uh, coordinator and possibly expand to a women's. There's just too many families that are suffering right now. If the individual's homeless, um, if they go to the hotel, if they are under the influence and cannot seek help, they're turned away. And as far as I know, they are inundated too. So, as a community and as a county board member, I'm just, I'm losing sleep over this. You know, it's just, it's touching too many lives that people that I've known that, you know, their families are suffering. So I just want to be part of the bleeding hearts right now to appeal to our, our board to see if anybody has any solution. Thank you.
Next motion, please. Mike? What?
I, I did. What I'm trying to find out, I received an email, and, and in there, it identified that it was going to courthouse security committee. Uh, there's a agenda for that, and I'm just curious who that committee is comprised of and.
Uh, there's a agenda for that and I'm just curious who that committee is comprised of and.
Um, okay, that's a committee that's required by the state spring court. It's comprised of, uh, the judge, who's by stat, by order is the chair of the committee. The board chair, me, Sarah, or maintenance person. There's a couple uh, committee, uh, community appointments that the judge makes. I can give you the whole stat, anybody who wants it, the whole statute. Uh, I can just actually, I'll stick it in the, in the box, in the meeting on Google Drive.
I don't need the statute. I just would appreciate seeing the, the list of.
Yeah, that's in the statute, the list of who's supposed to be on it. So I'll stick that in Google for everyone.
Microphones.
It's actually, the listing is in the exec committee meeting packet. From last week. Yeah, it's in the exec committee packet, so. I'm sorry.
This fraud assessment form, I assume we're supposed to fill that out and send it in.
Yeah, oh, and there is. There, there is a fraud assessment form in front of each, each of you. This is from our auditors. They wanted us to give the, you guys to take these home, fill them out anonymously and send them back in the prepaid envelope. So, um, that, please.
Is this the same form we got in the mail from Heather that some of us returned? Yeah.
I think this was different, yeah. This was the one that Heather Ultra gave me to hand out to everybody, so.
Just a quick point of order, hardly anonymous. It's got our name and address at the, the last page.
Oh, that, that one was not anonymous, the one that we sent out from our office. No, it had a self-addressed stamped envelope to our, to come back to our office. That was not anonymous. That they wanted to know if you had any conflicts of interest with the county as being a county board person. These are fraud, um, questionnaires and those go directly to Curver Rose. They don't go to us.
I understand, but the name is required on the last sheet, so it's not anonymous.
I guess it's anonymous to us, so we, we won't know who says what.
Oh, yeah, we won't know. Yeah, I'm sorry. Whoopsie.
I guess I should remember one thing since we're talking about fraud. Several members of the staff are going to Green Bay in July, July 18th. For a fraud, UWGP is doing a fraud awareness issue. Our auditors are paying for their admission to get into the program. Uh, we, we will have to pay for some hotels for some people. Who, those who choose to stay overnight. So, uh, but it involves, uh, I don't know if you've heard of the movie All the Queen's Horses? About some fraud that went on in Illinois. Where the municipal clerk literally stole 50 plus million dollars. So, um, and then there's a big discussion group after the meeting. So we are sending Heather, Karen, and from the clerk's office. Missy and Angie from the sheriff's office. Amber from, oh, Amber can't go. She, um, she has a previous commitment. Pete Hurley from HHS. So mostly, most of the people who handle money are going. So just wanted to let everybody know that.
Just, just. I have to laugh because the last information we sent in had our initials on the envelope, so they weren't anonymous. But this one is good because question says, ask the person, have you ever committed any fraud? I hope everyone, I hope everyone answers that correctly and then signs up for jail, but. I think there's a motion.
We have a motion to adjourn on the floor. Do you have a second? Motion in a second to adjourn, all of them in favor say aye. Otherwise.